This is the Thursday, January 8th, 2015, meeting of the zoning board of examiners and appeals. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Cars.
Here.
Mr. Ron. Ms. Iker.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Ms. McKay.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item are the minutes. From the Thursday, 2013, Thursday, November 13, 2014, meeting, for approval. Has everyone had a chance to look at those minutes? Are there any comments? I do have one comment on page five of six of the staff packet. I'm a little sensitive to name spellings. And I noticed Ms. Iker's, she, under the board member Vig, commented, fourth paragraph down, correct the spelling of her name. My name's never been misspelled, so, but that was my only comment. Are there any other comments on the minutes? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Could I have a motion, could I have a motion to approve, please? Thank you, Ms. McKay. You indicated you would make that motion. Thank you, Ms. McKay. And Mr. Vig, you've seconded that.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? If not, the motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next agenda item, special order of business disclosures. Do we have any disclosures this evening? Yes, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not present at the December meeting, but I have listened to the December 2014 recording.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. So you will be able to hear the case, agenda item F1, under unfinished business, then? Thank you. There are, are there any other disclosures? Seeing none, we have no agenda, consent agenda items for approval. There are no appearance requests. So we do have one case under F, unfinished business and actions of public hearings. That case is 2014-0190. Petitioner J. Patrick and Brooke Corkery. I'm assuming they and/or their representative are here this evening. Before we get to that case, this is a case under unfinished business, but I will read the order of business for variance hearings, again, for everyone's benefit. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearings shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. Representatives of groups have five minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall hear, shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the findings, shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. This case, we did hear the applicant, or the staff's and applicant's presentations last month. However, additional information was requested after the presentations of the staff by the board, prior to the public testimony being opened. So what we have received is additional information from staff. And what I would propose is that, in accordance with AMCR 2112-320A, where we do have new information, provided that we have five minutes for additional staff presentation, followed by five minutes for the applicant, to provide any additional new information or information with respect to what's presented by the staff. And then after that, we will open it for our public hearing. Are there any questions on the, we'll proceed? If not, if staff could provide us with the additional information that's been provided subsequent to last month's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the conclusion of the last meeting, before the case was postponed to this one, on December 11th, the board asked several questions, and wanted answers for, to several questions. And the department has written a memo addressing those questions raised by the board. I would like to read and summarize the memorandum that we provided, and essentially summarize the question and the answer, the question and answers that were needed at the last meeting. So, on the first page of the memo, the, I think, one of the questions that came up was, is the second-story balcony on the south side of the building eligible for non-conforming rights? And it is not. There was a building permit, permit number R11-1724, which was obtained in 2011, for replacement of the deck. And when, so whether or not the deck encroached into the setback prior to the rebuild in 2011, the fact that the deck was replaced in 2011 extinguished any non-conforming rights that it might have enjoyed. If 50% of the structure is destroyed or altered, then it's no longer eligible for non-conforming rights. So the encroachment of the second-story balcony on the south side is not eligible for non-conforming rights. The, essentially, the next section of the memo talks about lot coverage, and essentially the, this variance request, the original, the variance request was made correctly, that this is a variance for lot coverage, and I'll go into that a little bit more later. The next section has to do with the building permit, the subheading building permit, and the question was, what's the status of the current building permit? The sunroom or greenhouse was originally constructed in 1969. Earlier this year, it was determined that due to water leakage, there was considerable damage to the walls between the sunroom and the main structure, and the sunroom was in danger of imminent structural failure. The building official has issued building permit R14-2225, at the petitioner's risk for repair of the south wall and reconstruction of the sunroom, with a final certificate of occupancy contingent on obtaining a variance to, this variance, the variance to exceed maximum lot coverage. It appears that the permit allows the property owner to restore to the safe condition the building walls between the sunroom and greenhouse and the main structure, but also permits the tearing out and rebuilding of the attached greenhouse that is structurally failing. And a copy of that building permit is on the, attached to the back of this memo. The next section of the memo is, has to do with Ms. Dole's question about building permits, and how could the permits not, you know, why is there no building permit for the 1983 building enlargement that necessitated this maximum lot coverage variance? The board asked for classification, clarification on why the building permit was not found when the previous owner provided a letter stating that they obtained all required building permits. The possible answers are that no permit was ever submitted for review, or that the permit was misfiled. There's no sort of general statement that we can make about, you know, why, why the permit's not there, if there was an epic where building permits are not available. The building permit, Building Safety Division rejects the idea that, that there's some sort of decade where permits were, you know, disappeared, or something like that. They, they, they've left it with, you know, the building permit. If one was applied for, it should be there unless it was misfiled. Finally, in regards to the variance request, what variance is being requested, and have the owners exhausted all administrative remedies prior to requesting the variance? They have. The petitioner's requesting a variance to exceed maximum lot coverage in this district, the R1A district. The current structure, including the sunroom greenhouse, which is approximately 184 square feet, and the second-story balcony, approximately 325 square feet, is a total of 4,401 square feet. That's the house with the sunroom and the balcony, which is a lot coverage of 40.1%. Maximum lot coverage, of course, is 30%. The petitioner is offering to remove 76 square feet of the second-story balcony, resulting in a lot coverage of 39.4%. If the board approves the variance as requested by the petitioner, the sunroom or greenhouse would remain, as well as approximately three-quarters of the existing second-story balcony on the south side of the house. If the board approves the variance with the conditions proposed by the Community Development Department, the property owner would have to remove the second-story balcony, which is approximately 325 square feet, resulting in a lot coverage of approximately 37.2% lot coverage. As stated in the previous hearing, the department was unable to determine a precise calculation for the size of the deck, so the recommendation was for a variance allowing up to 38% lot coverage, in case the approximate calculation is incorrect. If the board does not approve the variance, the property owner would have to remove over 1,000 square feet of the building footprint. So the department does not change the recommendation on page seven of the original packet. Be happy to answer any questions. I know the petitioner's also here to respond to questions and speak to the variance.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Are there any additional questions of staff by the board? And I will ask, ask a question. Mr. McGlaughlin, I guess one of the other pieces of information from last, last month are that we've, all the board members were given a complete copy of the packet at the end of last month's meeting. We've now had a full month of being able to look at the entire staff packet as well. One of my questions, for clarification, and thank you, on page three of the new information, just for my benefit, there's discussion on the different percentages, and if we go to page eight of the staff packet, that site plan has the 40.1% lot cover. My question is, does that have, reflect the 40.1% lot coverage? And then does page nine reflect the 37.2% lot coverage? Plus or minus?
This is the current state of things. Yeah. Then that would be correct, that this would be the, yeah. Mr. Chair, page eight of the packet is the current as-built, and represents a lot coverage of 40.1%. Page nine shows the proposed site plan with the, with the reduction, with reduction in the second-story balcony, proposed by the petitioner, which would reduce the lot coverage to 39.4%. This is what the petitioner's requesting, page nine. And there isn't a drawing showing the department's recommendation of eliminating the, the second-story balcony altogether, resulting in the 37.2 to 38% lot coverage.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Ms. Iker.
Thank you, through the chair. I have two questions. My first question is just a point of clarification, and perhaps a refreshing of my memory. It's the permit that was allegedly applied for by Ms. Easley, that cannot be located. It's the, it's the construction that resulted during that time period that led to the overbuilding of the lot?
Yes, that's correct, the 1983 permit.
So theoretically, if Ms. Easley were to have submitted a permit that showed her construction plans, then this overbuilding of the lot issue would have arisen and been addressed at that point?
That's correct.
Okay, and so because we can't find that permit, it's the assumption that she either A, did not in fact submit one, or B, it's been misfiled?
Correct.
But if she did submit one, and it was issued by the department without catching this lot overbuilding issue, then the permit would, as a matter of course, be void. Is that correct?
Yes.
So either way, the construction occurred either under a permit that was void, or without a permit?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you for that. My second question is, in your discussions with the petitioner, in trying to work through this variance request, and come up with the proposed reduction to the premises, I understand staff's recommendation for an entire removal of that balcony. I'm wondering, did staff and the petitioner also talk about perhaps not rebuilding the sunroom greenhouse portion, to try and either further reduce the lot coverage?
Through the chair, Ms. Iker, no, that, that wasn't discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iker. Are there any other questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, could the petitioner or petitioner's representative come forward, please? Could you, again, state your, state and spell your name for the record?
Daniel Bowles, last name B-O-L-L-E-S.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Okay. I'm writing here. So, again, if there's any new information, or information, or time you want to reserve for rebuttal based on this new information, you can, and I would like to reiterate, we must find that all standards are met in order to grant the variance.
I understand. Thank you. To the chair, and to the board members, appreciate you taking the time again at this late date. I appreciate staff's presentation here. They did a lot of work here. There is one clarification. The permit was not obtained for the deck that was renovated. It was applied for, but not obtained. So that, that is a, is a slight change there. As to the yard set broke back encroachments on page one of staff's report, they say in 2011, all rights were extinguished, but the code does provide for in 2155-060, that repairs and maintenance of non-conforming structures can occur. And in fact, the last portion of that section, A of that subsection, says, "Nothing in this chapter shall be deemed to prevent the strengthening, restoration to a safe condition of any building or part thereof declared unsafe." So, taken into consideration that we have a, an inspection on the current structure that says it is unsafe, it is not a far stretch to think that a couple of years ago, that was the same condition of the deck as well. It was an unsafe condition. And Mrs. Corkery is here to testify to that. As far as the deck not serving as a form of fire egress, well, my bedroom is on a second floor level with an egress window, and 17 feet to the ground. It is still fire egress. I have a nice little metal ladder, I can hang on that, I can go right off the edge, no problem. So it does serve as, it can serve as a legal fire egress for the, for the residents. Our big question last time was, is it eligible for legalization as a, under 2155-04OD? And staff has addressed that on the first paragraph, page two, and we will be applying, that is why we're here now. And we will also be applying for the non-conforming determination on the setback issue for the front. As to the building permit issue, their staff quotes 2155-060 repairs, and this building can be redone as, you know, per the code. And that is what's been sought. And it's just this variance that stands in the way of this family being able to retain their home. As to the building enlargement, locate any record of permits, and no permit was ever submitted, or was misfiled. I was on that counter for a number of years, and I can tell you that, yes, there are many permits that have gone missing. In fact, try to find a greater anchorage area borough building permit through there, and most of them are not there. Many were put into Conex container, and it was kept out on the municipal grounds, and for years. Was subject to mold, water intrusion, heat, cold. Then they were taken from there, they were moved out to the old Nike site, out there at Kincaid. They're put in there, once again, water intrusion got in, then they were taken from there, they were taken down to Cope Street, or not Cope Street, excuse me, out by Merrill Field, where they were putting storage there. But in each one of those, those that were deemed to be unusable, they couldn't be microfilmed, they were not retained. So there's lots of, lots of files that are missing that Building Safety can't account Once again, the enlargement, it appears that, on the variance request, that the municipality will only consider that the Corkerries are moving towards conformity if the whole deck goes away. And that is, that's unfortunate. We feel that they are moving towards conformity by removing that portion, which was inadvertently added during the reconstruction of the failing deck before. And we'll leave, let the remainder of the time for Mrs. Corkery there. I'll entertain any questions.
You, you had taken up the five minutes of your time, Mr. Bowles, so if, is there additional presentation of the applicant? You, the owners, are all one applicant?
Yeah, I understand. But if you have any questions as to their, the condition of the deck, or what transpired with that, I can call on her.
Thank you. Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Bowles, I do have a question with regard to the condition of the deck prior to its, it says it was replaced, and I'm interested to know to what extent. Was it, was it the decking material, was it the stringers and girders and posts and foundations, what, to what extent was it rebuilt?
Okay, well, I will let Mrs. Corkery handle that, if she wants to address that question.
And again, if you could first state and spell your name for the record, please?
My name is Brooke Corkery, B-R-O-O-K-E-C-O-R-K-E-R-Y.
Thank you, Ms. Corkery.
And I am to address your question on the condition of the deck.
Yeah, or more specifically, how much of that deck was, when it says it was replaced, how extensive was that replacement?
It had to be totally replaced. It was rotted out.
Okay.
And the deck comes off our kitchen sliding glass doors, and off the sunroom. And if you look at page 86 in your packet, it will show the deck.
Okay, so that's what we see in page 86, then, is all new material that was put in place?
It, it had to be torn down. It was a danger.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Iker.
Sorry. Mrs. Corkery, while you're pointing to page 86, is the sunroom visible on this page?
Yes, it is.
Could you describe which part of the building is the sunroom?
You'll see that the, if I can approach you, I can show it to you. It's hard to describe from the paperwork.
I believe, Mr. Bowles, I think you could use that, the overhead. Okay, we can try, and that way everyone can see what we're all pointing to.
So you can see there is all the glass from the sunroom. And then the deck came out from that. So that whole side of the house is rotted out. We're having to replace everything on there. The deck, the sunroom, 20 windows, it's dangerous. So that's why we're here. We want to at least keep the deck that was existing when we bought the home. When we applied for the, when we went through the construction process, we worked with TreeLine Construction, and they told us that there was a variance issue. We then contacted Tim Potter with Dowell Engineers. He came to the home, did all the measurements, and said that we were within the proper variance, and told us to go ahead and get the permits. So at that time, again, we were working with TreeLine, and we told, we've told them that we had been approved to go ahead to get the permits. We also told them that they were not to start construction until the permits were in hand. They came out and went ahead and started the construction without the permits. We weren't aware of that. We worked for a living. We came home one day, and, you know, trucks were out there, and the, and the deck is pretty much gone, and they've started on it. The pilings went in, the one that's over, closest one, is 38 feet deep. The next piling, I believe, is 85 feet deep, and the third piling went in at 185 feet. So all we want is to have our deck and to have our home fixed, and this is just sort of unbelievable. So anyway, TreeLine went ahead and did the construction, and that's where we are. That's why we're here in front of you today, because we have to replace that south side of the house. Otherwise, I guess we demolish it, I don't know. Because it's, you can't live in it. We're living in visqueen right now.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the petitioner by the board? Does staff have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bowles, I do have a... Mr. Bowles, I do have a question, and I asked it last month, and you answered it. Bear with me here. And it had, the question was with respect to finding number one and the lot, and the shape of the lot and how the topography lent itself to, I think that it was, the response was, "Topography made this a unique shape." But I don't see how topography really is at the crux of the lot coverage. To my, to my mind, if topography was an issue, we might end up with actually a smaller footprint. I don't know if you've had a chance to, to consider those comments or that question any further in the last month, if you have any further comment to, to address that.
Well, as we mentioned last time, the driveway itself exceeds municipal standards for slope. As the surveyor himself shows on the ASBIL survey, drops five feet out to the property line. And then it continues to drop even farther. There on page H, you'll notice that, from 107 down to 102. And then it continues to drop from there to the curb. So, yes, there is, it may not be a major slope, but there it is. The lot is slope affected. The house is built into the hill, so that you, on the backside of the house, you have one story; on the south side of the house, you have two. But as we mentioned there, the guidelines talk about the physical condition of the property. And so, we address the physical condition of the real property there. And municipality does not define property, nor do they define land in the zoning code. But both land and property can mean the, not just the land itself, the physical soil and the properties thereof, but anything contained on or in that property, under the ground as well. Merriam-Webster even defines it that way. Besides that, illustrated book, Development Standards, which municipality uses, defines it as that. Legal Ags, PECs, and Code Administration defines it as well as that. So, there is a physical circumstance here to the property, the house itself, which is, puts life in danger for the occupants. The deck originally was put on the house in 1983, and has remained there until 2011, when it was replaced. For a wood deck, that's a nice, long lifetime. But the years of water intrusion just made it too unsafe for occupancy. That's why it was replaced. The structure itself has got problems. If you take a look at the list of permits that have been issued over the past few years, it starts out with little things, plumbing, electrical. Then it goes to the roof leaking. We need a re-roof. That permit had to be changed out because it became a structural issue. When they got in, they found rot in the ceiling. Then they moved to the, they found rot in the walls. Now, that's where we're at now. Yes, this has taken a while to unfold from 2011 till now, but this is what happens as you start down these, this trail of playing catch-up with years of rot going on in there and water intrusion from the roof down to the foundation. That all has to be gone in and taken care of, and you don't find it just all at once. It's uncovered over time. And so, it's taken, you know, three years for this to come about. And so, we would address that, since the code is absent of definition, that their property is affected adversely, and it is unique to this structure in this neighborhood. And that, yes, therefore, standard number one is met.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Ms. Dole.
Thank you, through the chair. I was looking just now, as you were speaking, as to your, sorry. Just now, you addressed question one about the physical condition. And in the application, you, you had some of that as well. You have a statement in there. You say, "The unique physical circumstances and the plating features peculiar to this property create the need for this variance." And I under, just now, you addressed the unique physical circumstances and explained the, the house itself and the condition of the house with the water intrusion putting, being a unique feature to the property. But I would like clarification about what you meant when you say, "The plating features peculiar to this property" in that statement.
Well, in the, as we mentioned in the previous meeting, the, the lot was originally subdivided and, and platted out at 11,250 square feet. And then, in '65, it was redone, and they missed, when they, they reconfigured those lots through there, they missed the reduction. And from 1965 and until this fall, last fall, it was always listed at 11,250 square feet. So, therefore, that is, that was not caught. And as the plat shows there, the footnote on the plat, it says that that plat was done to take care of those irregularities, that those irregularities were not followed through on. And any permits issued on that property were issued under the assumption that there was more square footage than what was there. Also, it is, it is a corner lot. It is, and we had to get an interpretation here just a few years back from the municipality as to what the front yard was. Because the front yard, they said, was what was on the cul-de-sac and not what was on Forest Park Drive. And so, that had to be gone through. And matter of fact, it took two letters from the municipality to finally get that taken care of. So, it was, there are some peculiarities with the plat, and it's unfortunate that it's taken 50 years to bring it to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Bowles, we will open the hearing up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? If you could come forward, please? And again, if you could state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Michael Zoske, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-Z-O-S-K-E.
Was that S. or F.?
S. is in Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Zoske. You have three minutes for your.
I'll try not to take all of them. I've known Brooke Corkery and Pat since 2006. The first time I went to their house was for a fundraiser barbecue that took place on the pre-existing deck. I think the second and third times that I were at their house were for other functions, for various nonprofits, everything from AWAKE to Public Radio to the forays, functions that they're no longer able to have due to the condition of their house. I was actually house-sitting for them when the leaks in the roof first surfaced. And it was, it was a moment of panic for me as the kitchen ceiling was coming down. These, these are good people who are active in the community, and, and they're just trying to, to protect the investment that they made when they purchased the house. And I, I don't know. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Zoske. Are there any questions of the, by the board?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Again, if you could state and spell your name for the record, please.
My name is Clayburn Porter. That's C-L-A-I-B-R-N-E, Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. And I am involved in the project. I am both an architect and a builder. But beyond that, in 1973, I built a house on Arbor Circle, and I knew the people who owned this house originally and have watched it. And I did not even realize that the Corkerries had bought the house after I had left the neighborhood. But what you saw in the existing conditions and the permits that Paula Easley did, or rather, not the permits, but the construction, those were all existing conditions that, that were incumbent or part of the house when the Corkerries bought the residence. And so, there's just been an awful lot of confusion, and the city really hasn't helped things when they do not keep the records and the permits. In fact, they've called me over the years to come get plans because they're going to throw them out because they didn't wish to keep them. So, that has helped confuse the issues here or confound the problem. So, just, and, you know, at this point, just to say that I've seen the house through the, the life of it to this point, and the conditions that are represented by the Corkerries and what I saw when I lived in the neighborhood, I have not changed from what the Easleys did and, well, and all the other people that had owned the house since then.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. And again, could, what, what years were those, or when was the last time you lived in the neighborhood?
Pardon me?
You, you'd mentioned you used to live in the neighborhood.
Yes, I, I built a house on Arbor Circle, lived in it from 19, let's see, '73 through '70, '78 or '79. And the original, Bob Denny bought the house when I was there, did an addition on it. Then it was sold to Paula Easley, and then, and she did extensive work, and, and then someone else bought it. And I believe the Corkerries bought it after that other party, which I did not know, and at that point. But I've watched it. But the deck and the greenhouse were done through the Easley construction, or when the Easleys owned the, the property, and so.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Porter?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. Bowles, or does the applicant have any rebuttal? You've indicated they do not. With that, the matter rests with the board. Assuming everyone is collecting their thoughts. Yes. Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, case 2014-0190, a move that we granted variance from AMC 2140-030H to permit a structure to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage of 30%. Subject to the department's recommendations, page seven of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. And those are recommendations one through five on the packet, on that, on page seven?
Yes, that's correct, one through five.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. And Ms. Iker, you've indicated you would second that motion?
I have.
Thank you, Ms. Iker. Mr. Vig, would you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, I'll begin with finding number one, standard number one. The physical circumstances. I do believe that, that this particular lot, as Mr. Bull's outlined, is a, is a corner lot and, and in some earlier plating activity, number one, established a, a lot area that apparently is larger than what really, really exists, and was never, never ultimately corrected. As well as the topography that he's identified, does, in, rise to the, the level where I believe it could be, that standard one could be met. I'd be interested to hear from other board members on that particular issue. So, moving on to standard number two, strict application of the code would create an exceptional or undue hardship on the property owner and deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. I believe that strict application of the code in this instance would, would create an exceptional or undue hardship. Purchasing the home with improvements in place that have been there for years and, and enjoying the property for, for a period of time, and then finding that it needs to be reconstructed is, and at the same time, reconstructed to be, have parts of the structure removed, seems to be a pretty exceptional hardship to me. And I go back to some of the language in the, in the memo that we got in the interim about, "Nothing in this chapter shall be deemed to prevent the strengthening or restoring of a safe condition, to a safe condition of any building or part thereof," seems to give some latitude for, for the applicant's activities in trying to simply restore the structure to what existed. So, I, I believe that standard is substantially met. Standard number three, the hardship's not self-imposed. Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. I think there've been, there's been a history of activities that have taken place over the years, and we've heard that from Mr. Bowles and, and Mr. Porter, who, who know some of the history of the home. And I don't believe it's due to the actions of the applicant. So, I would like to hear from other board members on standard number three, but I think that standard could be substantially met as well. Standards four, five, and six, I concur with staff's findings on those, that the standards are met. And standard number seven, that the variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possibly reasonable use of the land. We have, I didn't count up the number of letters from the neighboring properties in the community, but probably 10 to 12. All, all of- the community, but, um, probably 10 to 12, all of, all of whom support, uh, granting of the variance and that, that the, uh, excess lot coverage is not of, uh, something that's visible or noticeable and, and so I think in the spirit of rebuilding the structure to what existed, that it, it would be the, the minimum variance making possible a reasonable use of the land. And so, uh, I find that standard seven, I believe, is met. I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Iker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Vig, for taking the, um, brunt of what is a very difficult discussion, at least for me, um, with this case.
Could you speak up? Please, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I have a little bit of a cold. I personally am struggling with standards one, two, and possibly seven. I think I can agree with your comments on standard three, but I'd like to speak to these individually. Standard number one is a standard that this board repeatedly struggles to, um, figure out how to interpret. And we recently had the benefit of a motion, or a memo from the, um, Assistant Municipal Attorney that addressed the plain meaning of the statute, the Thibodeau case that interprets the granting or denying of the variance because of the peculiarities of, um, the specific property, which must arise from the physical conditions of the land itself. Um, and I want to address the comments that petitioners' representatives made regarding the lot being a corner lot and the slope or topography of the footprint. Typically, um, the cases that we see before us where those two factors are at issue, we normally see, um, a request for a variance from an encroachment. If it's a corner lot, then a petitioner is usually requesting to be able to encroach upon a setback so that their house fits on the corner of the lot. Or, um, for the slope, we usually see a reduction in, in footprint, it was, as it was mentioned earlier. This, this case is unusual because what we're getting is a request for a variance for overbuilding on the lot. And so I really struggle with trying to, to find a way to meet the very first standard based on what we have before us. The second standard, I'm also struggling to find being substantially met because, um, the strict application of the code would create an exceptional and undue hardship, in my opinion, on the property owner, but there's an and there. And we also have to find would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other parties or other properties in the same district. And we see s- evidence of several homes in the neighborhood that are probably in conformance. We can assume they're in conformance, or at least the majority of them, several single-family homes that are not overbuilt. And so for that reason, I'm struggling to meet both parts one and two on section, on the second standard. The third standard, um, I, I very much appreciate the testimony and clarification from Mrs. Corcoran. Um, I don't believe that the rebuilding of the deck, even if it, um, even if the rot issue couldn't be addressed by the, a permit of right. I, I don't believe that the petitioner has taken any actions that self-impose, um, the condition that they find their house in now and, uh, or participated in, in engaging construction without a permit. So I can find standard number three met. I also struggle a little bit with standard number seven, that the variance is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land. Um, I question if the whole south side of the house, in fact, has to be rebuilt, is there a possible reduc- reduction in the rebuilding that would make sense to meet the standard? Um, I don't believe it's a, a good position for the board to be in to be adding and subtracting square footages of portions of decks. But that's where we find ourselves and, and so for these reasons, um, right now, I'm not planning on supporting the motion. However, I would welcome other comments from board members and, um, could be swayed otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iker. Uh, Ms. Dole.
I only, um, request to speak to say that I actually was thinking the same things that Ms. Iker was, just said, only she said them better than I could have said them. Um, I was swayed, uh, on factor three, um, agreed with the staff recommendations on four, five, and six and was struggling but unable to find a way, um, to be, uh, convinced by the, by a preponderance or that there, as to, that the standards for one, two, and seven were met. So I'm not, I, I don't intend to support the motion unless I am persuaded by other members of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Could we have any other discussions by any board, other board members? Um, I, I'll weigh in as well then. Um, we've, uh, we've struggled with this case. I think the people in attendance can, um, understand that by the amount of time it took to, uh, for someone to make a motion and, and the discussion. And again, I, I've stressed, we have to, to find that all seven standards are met. Um, and I, I don't intend to support the motion either, um, for the, concurring with the, the findings of Ms., Ms. Iker and Ms. Dole. We've been asked to, um, take a, what I'll call a leap of faith, that, uh, either there was a building permit that was issued that's been lost. Um, but I, I kind of touched on this last month and I appreciate Ms. Iker bringing it up today. If that permit was issued and a variance was necessary, that permit was issued in error. And so, um, that means we need to hear this case for, um, not based on, well, a permit was issued, but should a variance be granted? And we're being asked to exceed the lot coverage by 10%. Um, we've kind of nipped away at it, whether it's 39% or 38%. I, I, for my benefit of, or for my line of thinking, I need to find out why we grant this variance and I just don't see that those, uh, three standards are met. I concur with staff's findings, so I, I do not intend to support the motion. Mr. Hart, were, did I see a comment or did you weigh in wanting to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was just going to, um, ask a question about Ms. Paula Easley. I, I thought I heard in the recording for the last meeting that, uh, she actually had worked for the planning division at some point in time and, but maybe it's a moot point with Ms. Iker's comments regarding that even if a permit was given, it was in air. So I, I think you answered my question.
Are there any other comments? Yes, Ms. McKay.
Well, the, the standards that everyone else is struggling with, I too, um, am struggling with, and that's one, two. I see that, that three, I don't think this hardship is self-imposed. It's something that, that the petitioner didn't create and so it's something that happened to the petitioner. And then number seven. So I'm going to start at the back, number seven. The variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. We generally focus on, on, uh, the minimum part of that, but, um, I think if we focus on the reasonable part, that asking someone to remove a thousand square feet of their house is not reasonable. And, um, in that case, I do think that this is, uh, this variance, uh, does make, um, sense and that that standard, um, is met. So then we're back down to one and two and, and the discussion about, um, the land and the land itself and, and whether the house is, is a part of that. And that the condition of the house, the unsafe condition of the house, um, is a, an, an aspect, is a, is a physical circumstance of the property. Whether that caused the overbuilding, um, it did not, but, um, there is a circumstance that exists now, a house that needs to be rebuilt. And for all those reasons, um, I am going to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Are there, other comments by any of the board members? Any additional comments? Uh, that motion fails by a vote of, um, four to two. We must find that, um, the, to grant a variance, that there's, uh, five members must vote in favor. So that motion does fail. I must read for the record, "Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." That is our, um, one and only case this evening. We have, um, there are no other items on our regular agenda for public hearings. Our item I reports, uh, I'm not aware of it. I do not have any, anything to report. Could staff provide us with their, uh, what the status is of next month's cases?
Mr. Chair, this is Erica McConnell. I'm the current planning manager. I don't know off the top of my head, um, the number of cases for next month. I apologize, but I'd be happy to email the board tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McConnell. It does, assuming we have a meeting next month, what's our, um, what's the date of What was that date, Ms. McKay?
The 12th.
The 12th. Does anyone, uh, is anyone aware whether they will be absent from next month's meeting?
I likely will be unable to attend.
Thank you. We had, um, at last month's meeting, there was a, a handout from the municipal attorney's office that was provided regarding some questions that had come up. Do we have, um, are there any, uh, is there any discussion from staff with respect to this handout?
Um, Mr. Chair, I didn't bring a copy, uh, of the, of the analysis. I'm not prepared to speak to it, but I'd be happy to, uh, take notes on any questions the board has for, uh, for response, maybe at the next meeting.
Are there any question, excuse me, hot mic, are there any questions of staff with respect to the, the handout on, um, this is the handout from the Department of Law on, um, the two questions that were raised with respect to the, the Thibodeau case and the, um, Supreme Court cases, relevant Supreme Court cases? And I, I guess if there aren't any, if someone will come forward or bring those up to staff, send an email, we can address them further next month. Are there any other comments from any of the board members? Does staff have any information on additional, uh, member applicants?
There's no news on, uh, uh, filling the, the two vacancies on the board, but it's a priority. Encourage you to, um, ask your friends.
If not, um, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Ms. Iker, you've seconded.
I'm seconded.
Any objection? If not, we are adjourned.